We thank you for the rain that some of us received last night. We thank you for the privilege of being your children and following after you. We thank you for each of our commissioners. We ask for divine guidance, direction for them for today, and input that may come from others here in the room, that it will be given wisely and graciously. We praise you for the opportunity to serve you and live our lives in Bonner County, and we ask your continued guidance and blessing not only on our county but upon our nation. And you'll give us guidance in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Commissioner, would you like to?
I'll make a motion to amend our agenda. Based on the information before us, I move to amend the order of the agenda by removing planning item number two regarding administrative appeal of MLD 0033-25, Upland Acre, and moving planning items number one, three, and four to the end of the agenda and Parks and Waterways item number one immediately following the clerk's items.
Step down in second. Any discussion?
No.
I'll just state that the removal of the planning item was at the request of the Planning Department so that we could get proper paperwork in order, and the intent would be for that to come on to next week's business meeting agenda. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Commissioner, if you'd be so kind as to make another motion for the agenda?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Actually, could we go to the adopting the order of the amended agenda?
Yeah, you just said I didn't forget that, and I did. I make a motion that we adopt the amended order of agenda.
Step down in second. Any discussion?
No.
We're pretty confident we want to do this.
I think so.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let me update my agenda.
And I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Step down in second. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes?
Commissioner Corn.
Yes.
Motion carries. Sorry, I just need to get caught up here. And for the clerk.
All right, good morning. I'm here presenting FY '25 Claims Batch Number 40 in the amount of $578,952.30. Big-ticket items, road and bridge, spent about $256,000 on Crest Rock, and our self-insured medical totaled about $228,000 this go-round.
Thank you for the highlights. Commissioner Corn, since there's just the two of us right now, would you be comfortable just making the motions?
I would be comfortable doing that.
Thank you.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of the FY '25 Claims and Batch Number 40 totaling $578,952.30.
Step down in second. Any discussion?
None.
Any public comment? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, clerk. And per our amended agenda, we're going to have Parks and Waterways.
Well, we're going to do the TORT resolution first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So close.
There wasn't a second item.
There was a second item.
All right.
So I'm asking the commissioners to open the budget and allow us to transfer $100,000 from the work comp line in TORT to the TORT deductible line. So we've paid, according to Christian, I think, all of the expected work comp expenses. He had about $369,000 left in there. His B budget is depleted, and so we're asking to shift that $100,000 so that he can continue to pay claims.
As a clarifying question, is it correct that the reason that we're exceeding what was budgeted is because this is, we can't predict the cost of claims?
Well, not just that, but we also used TORT to pay one of the settlements.
Just want to be sure we're all on the same page for why the budget value was exceeded.
Yes, and Christian said he thinks that $100,000 will carry him through the end of the year. Hopefully, we won't be back.
Any additional board questions? Would you like to make a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-42, adjusting the TORT budget by moving $100,000 out of Line 024-6120 into Line 024-6870.
Step down in second. Any public comment? Seeing none. Deliberation? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now.
Now, the clerk says. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me that I missed an item. Now, Parks and Waterways. Come up here and go there.
Good morning, everybody. Parks and Waterways, Matt Zola, Director. This is in reference to a waterways tow vehicle grant acceptance. Bonner County Parks and Waterways Department would like acceptance of a grant award from the state of Idaho to support the purchase of a new waterways maintenance tow vehicle. This grant will enhance the county's operational capabilities by providing reliable transportation, fieldwork, maintenance, and emergency response. The funding reflects a continued partnership between the county and the state to invest in essential infrastructure and services that directly benefit local residents. This addition of new, the addition of the new vehicle will improve efficiency and safety for county personnel and support the delivery of vital public services through Bonner County. This will require a $21,000 match from the county to accept a $49,000 award from the state. This will allow for the purchase of a $70,000 waterways maintenance vessel tow vehicle. And we have a couple different options for today. Option A would be to use some contingency funds from FY '25. Me and Jessica have discussed this. We've determined that we can, roughly with what we have left in the year, it would be appropriate that out of my department, we would have roughly $10,000 we could come up with. So what we're asking for is an additional $11,000 from contingency funds. What that would allow for is to sign this agreement, and then we'd be able to start working on purchasing this vehicle between now and October 1, which is a good thing. And option B would be to commit to the acceptance of the grant, but we worry about funding it in fiscal year '26, so we wouldn't be able to start shopping for our waterways vehicle until after October 1. And the resolutions are wrote both ways, depending however you see fit.
So bottom line is, we're looking to move $11,000 either from contingency or from the general funds. Is that correct?
It would be from the general fund contingency. Yeah, this year. Which has $395,000.
I want to clarify, though, that the 2025 general fund contingency.
Yes. But the amount would be reduced to $11,000, not $21,000.
Versus $21,000.
Correct.
And that would allow us to start shopping for that truck now. And regardless, just making sure that we accept the grant. Because I know back in January, when we applied for the grant, we were, it was, we were trying to figure out how to fund this, and it seems like through that time, we've come up with a plan to fund this project. And so now we'd like to accept the grant now that it's been awarded.
So I appreciate that you worked with the auditor to come up with how much funding could come out of Parks and Waterways budget. I think it's important that we try to be as self-funded as possible from the departments. And since there have been cost savings realized this year based on other board decisions, I think that's necessary and warranted. So I appreciate that that's been looked at instead of looking for $21,000 to come out of the general fund contingency. If I remember correctly, when you were discussing this previously, this would create an opportunity, if this truck was purchased, to not have to use two vehicles for staff to go to sites, but to be able to use a single vehicle. So there is a significant gain in efficiency over time, both from a vehicle cost, fuel maintenance, as well as fuel efficiency side of things, and just general efficiency for the staff. So I appreciate that that's now been taken into consideration. Any questions, Commissioner?
So to be clear, we'd be moving $11,000 out of the general.
Fund contingency. Into his B budget. To allow him, or C budget for a capital purchase.
Commissioner, would you like to make a motion to that end?
Let's see, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-44 that the county to accept and fund the grant awarded to Bonner County Parks and Waterways for a new vehicle by matching $21,000 as required. $10,000 coming from Parks and Waterways budget, and the remaining $11,000 coming from the general fund's contingency 2025.
Step down in second. Any public comment? I think you have got somebody behind you, man.
So first question is, what size of a vehicle is it that he's looking at? It sounds like it's going to be a new vehicle. Has the department looked at used vehicles? I do know that Pierce has a red Ram four-door 1500 that is extremely low mileage. And so I don't know if that has been looked into or considered. I believe the vehicle has less than 12,000 miles on it.
Thank you. Director, if you'd like to provide some more details about the, how the grant functions and what the intent of the purchase would be?
Yeah, so the, this grant's wrote for a one-ton crew cab pickup truck, and that is due to the weight requirements that we haul with it. And then as far as shopping around, it's not realistic that we're going to get a brand-new truck. Brand-new trucks are very expensive, and then just trying to file a fiscal responsibility and trying to get the best bang for the buck. We are planning on purchasing a used truck. The general goal is to have a one-ton truck that's, you know, just a few years old so we can extend the life of this project. And yeah, once it's accepted, then we can start doing our shopping and just try to be as responsible as possible.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Do we have any hands raised online? I can't tell sometimes because of that top banner, it blocks. Thank you. Any more deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, vote carries. Sorry, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners, and thanks for adjusting the agenda.
Airport. Mr. Shook.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I have one item for you. Bonner County has established a disadvantaged business enterprise program in accordance with the regulations of the U.S. Department of Transportation, 49 CFR Part 26. Bonner County has received federal financial assistance from the Department of Transportation. And as a condition of receiving this assistance, Bonner County has signed an assurance that it will comply with 49 CFR Part 26. Bonner County has disseminated this policy statement to the revenue, I'm sorry, to the relevant departments of the organization. This statement has been distributed to DVE and non-DVE business communities that may perform work on DOT-assisted contracts and was accomplished by inclusion and solicitation of bids or requests for qualifications. I'll make note that the FAA or AIP program is part of the Department of Transportation and is funded there. I recommend signing this policy statement.
Thank you, Director. And I see we also have Mr. Wilson online who has reviewed the contract terms. In my review of this, it appears to be primarily us confirming that we are adhering to their own guidelines for contracts. Mr. Wilson, I was just wondering if you or Mr. Shook could confirm whether or not there's any obligations beyond the standard DOT contract terms that we should be aware of? I didn't see any, but I would like to get legal opinion.
No, that's my opinion as well. Although I think Dave is almost, is probably more equipped to speak on this topic than I if he wants to chip in.
Sure. No, it's the standard processes. We've, we have no obligation to do anything above and beyond the requirements of CFR Part, I'm sorry, 49 CFR Part 26. This is the same program that we've been doing for as long as we have been receiving federal assistance. The reporting requirements are slightly different, which is why there's a new policy statement. It really doesn't change the process at all or the regulatory requirements. In our circumstances, in my experience here, we set DVE goals every year, but because the DVE community in North Idaho we pull from is so small, we generally don't meet our goals. It's acceptable as long as we have the goal set and attempt to meet them.
Thank you, that's my experience with these types of programs as well. Appreciate the clarification. Any questions, Commissioner?
I don't. Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County authorize the chair to sign this policy statement administratively.
Step down in second. Any public comment? Seeing none, any more deliberation? Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Road and Bridge.
Good morning, Jason Top, Director of Road and Bridge for the record. So I have for you today is the interest on Road and Bridge Fund Balance Resolution. So Idaho Code 31-1605 provides that the Board of County Commissioners may adjust the budget as adopted, provided that there shall be no increase in anticipated property taxes. So the Bonner County Commissioners desire, I wrote that as, that way because Asia asked us to write this memo. So the Bonner County Commissioners desire to have the interest from the Road and Bridge Fund Balance allocated each month to the Road and Bridge Revenue Line 002-4710 Interest on Investments. We just created that line with auditing. From the county's general fund for future Road and Bridge projects, this interest will be calculated each month for the future projects based off the Road and Bridge Fund Balance and placed into the 002-4710 Interest on Investments until such time a future resolution, resolution is brought forward to reallocate these funds. This revenue line 002-4710 is being created to decrease the amount of money needed to be budgeted for any given year by using the interest accrued from the Road and Bridge Funds to help pay for road projects rather than staying in the general fund. Please see the attached resolution. And if you guys would like a little insight on this particular project that we're looking at, that would be the Eastern Bridge Project, which is going to be funded in about two years that we're coming up on. And it's going to be about a million dollars that we're going to come up with. So this money would be allocated towards that project. So we're not have to try and budget for it in one year.
Which is exactly what we were trying to do with our new budget process. So this is in alignment with that request. Any questions, Commissioner? Thanks, Jason. Yeah, thank you, Jason. This is, again, just for the public's awareness, this, this is exactly what we're trying to do with all of our budgets, is to identify projects that are going to require a significant capital outlay that are going to be multi-years out and figure out how to plan for and fund for, save up, if you would, to be able to afford to pay for those projects when they're come due. And so this is a great way to move forward with that, in my opinion. Would you like to make a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-43 that authorizes the clerk's office to open the Road and Bridge fiscal 2025 budget and add accrued interest each month based off of the current month-to-month Road and Bridge Fund Balance to Revenue Line 002-4710 beginning August 1st, 2025 for future Road and Bridge projects.
Step down in second. Any public comment? Seeing none. Nothing further from me, so roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
I'm sure Commissioner Williams will be pleased, since that was her idea. All right. And we are on to planning.
Thank you, commissioners, Alex Fan, Assistant Director. So I think the first item that we're going to talk about is the continuation of the appeal for the vacation rental permit that we began talking about a couple weeks ago. I have nothing new to add to that, but I believe that the appellate's attorney does. So that would be Mr. Alan Miller.
Good morning, commissioners, can you hear me?
You can.
Good morning. Alan Miller here as attorney for Bill and Karen Ferguson, who are in the audience. Bill and Karen, why don't you just raise your hands to, if you could? There they are. And they, we were all there a couple weeks ago, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue the hearing just so that I could get some public records that help our case. And this is an opportunity for you to help Bill and Karen. They have a cabin at Huckleberry Neighborhood on Priest Lake, and we have the opportunity for a win-win solution for you to support their private property rights, support their vacation rental business, and you're also protecting the neighborhood of the Huckleberry area. I have, could I have the opportunity to share my screen? I have a PowerPoint to, to share. Is that possible?
We'll see if technology can support that.
Okay.
Alan, I've also provided the presentation that.
Okay.
You provided to me. I gave those to the commissioners yesterday.
I appreciate that. If, if I can't share the screen, then I'll just continue that.
Yeah, just give us a moment. We'll see if technology can accommodate the request.
Okay. I see that.
And Mr. Miller, you may get a pop-up on your screen asking you to accept becoming a presenter or something along those terms. Panelist, I think, actually, is the terminology. We can see you now. You might want to go into presentation mode to make the image larger. Alan, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Let me try this again. Can you see the exhibits and hear me?
We can.
Okay. So just to make sure you understand the situation, my clients have property at Huckleberry, and they have the, the, right at the cabin, they have a driveway that's available for three cars to park, but they also have the ability to park. They have property rights in two other areas of the neighborhood where they can park their, their cars. And that is where we have the ability to... Can you see this, the Exhibit A? Can you hear me?
Your first slide is the one that's showing up at the moment.
Okay.
Alan, if you, if you look at the lower right-hand corner of your screen, where there's the scale bar that says fifty percent, the icon just to the left of that scale bar, sort of a box with upside-down T below it.
Yes.
To the, over to your left.
Okay.
That icon, if you select that, should go into a slideshow presentation mode that would show us a full slide.
Okay. I apologize for my computer skills here.
It's okay. We'll see if it helps a little bit. It may or may not. It's not changing. Okay, well, if you want to just, you can select each slide on the left-hand side that you want to show us, and it will be the main image that we see.
Okay. Come on.
So those, those sort of thumbnail images on the left, if you select one of those, that should be the one that shows up on the screen.
Okay. There. Can you see that?
We can.
That's Exhibit One. So my client's property is where it says Sandy Shores Ridge Nine Single Family Lot, where there's an arrow, a black line there, and you can see a tennis court icon drawing above that. And then there's a blue square, and that is an overflow parking area for, for boat trailers and for cars. And that is, my clients have property rights to use that as, as places for overflow and for parking that is not going to be on the street, which the legislative history shows is that is the concern of, of the Commissioners when they passed this, this ordinance. This Exhibit B shows, is an aerial photograph, again, showing where the, where my client's property is, where my client's property rights are to the tennis court, and where my client's property rights to the boat trailer lot, where they can have overflow off-street parking. That's a, a photo of the tennis court parking area. You can see it's got plenty of, plenty of area. It's only two hundred, two hundred yards from my client's property. This is a, a letter, an email that my clients have received. They, they have a top-notch Airbnb rating and want to keep it that way. And this is a cabin that can support, it's got five bedrooms and supports family reunions and, and should have a capacity of twelve, which is what we were seeking you to, to amend, to allow. This is the boat trailer area, again, a large area for off-street parking. This is one of the legislative history pieces that I got from the, from the public records request that Bonner County Roden Bridge had made a comment during the time that you were considering this ordinance, that they want to address the occasional complaints regarding numbers of parked vehicles blocking roads in the vicinity of, of vacation rental properties. And that is certainly not an issue here that you need to be concerned with, with my clients. Here's another comment. When you were considering the ordinance, you were, I just wanted to make sure that people had property rights to ensure that the property has sufficient land area to, to accommodate all parking needs. And so that's, that's what my clients are here for, asking for. We, again, it's a win-win-win situation for you to support my client's situation with private property rights to these areas to park, support their vacation rental business, and, and to protect the neighborhood. And so this is consistent, as I, I submitted a brief two weeks, two weeks ago that I hope you have reviewed and considered, and this is consistent with state, state law and county law, and you can interpret the ordinance to allow my, my clients to have a capacity of twelve people, rather than what was unexpected this year was that they were reduced. They, they used to, they had twelve for, for four years, and then it was suddenly, because of an interpretation of this new ordinance, they have now, they were, their permit only says nine now, but you can interpret the ordinance consistent with state and county law and allow them to have a capacity of twelve, because they do have an opportunity and availability for parking off the street. My clients are there. If you have any questions for them, if you have any questions for me, I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. As the, as the Appellate's, would you like to make another comment?
Yes.
Please state your name and residency for the record.
Hi, Karen Ferguson. Is this on?
It doesn't amplify. It just makes it easier for folks online to hear us.
Okay, I'll talk loud. My name's Karen Ferguson. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing our plea. We, I, I wanted to give a little bit of some understanding and clarity as to the, the consequences that can actually be applied to us in this particular area. We bought our house with our son. We're the grandparents, and our son is overseas, and so every July we come and we have our family time at the lake cabin. We, he's, he bought, we bought it with him. He is no, he's not able to come because he's overseas most of the time. We decided to rent it out for that specific purpose of families getting together, establishing memories. And it was very, very important for us to vet the families. We only do it six to eight times a year. We're not big VRBO vacation renters to make money. We're doing it for a particular purpose. And that is the beauty of our area, the beauty that people can afford. There's no hotels around there that can't afford to, to see the beauty of Priest Lake. In this particular case, what we did was, for years, we did not, we abided by every single Bonner County rule. We've never done anything negligent to the responsibility of our guests. And we actually were able to use our property, even though we use it ourselves for our own family and friends. During July, we have to use the overflow area because our land was platted thirty-one years ago. Thirty-one years ago, before Sandy Shores even was developed, the, the design folks understood the shortness of our plat of land. And it's a very narrow road in our area. It was, the only turnaround spot is the tennis court for everyone. We have to use it for winter time, because we can't even get hardly in our driveways in the winter time. So this was a particular acceptance that was given to three houses, only three in the whole neighborhood, that have short driveways. Secondly, we are the only ones that Airbnb our house. So we're almost targeted for everyone else that, there's about seven Airbnb hosts up there, and they don't have a problem because they don't have a short driveway. So the drive, the overflow area isn't overflowed. It isn't overcrowded at all. It's just that a matter of this particular, our house having to use an overflow for our own self, as well as our guests in, in their own sense. Secondly, the unintended consequences of us not getting notified until our renewal date is June third. So June third is way too short of a time to cancel. And if we cancel Airbnb us, we get our reduced reputation rate down because we canceled on our, on our guests. And so our rate, which is four point nine six, and has been established as the slice of heaven cabin from our guests who book out now a year ahead. So we already have four people that have requested to come back and use our cabin, and we can't give them an answer, so we're neck, we're, we're not even being able to communicate. We were, we were going to be able to rent our cabin on the twentieth through the twenty-fifth of this month, and we said no, because we don't know if we can rent to over nine people, and they were eleven. So in the slideshow that Alan actually did, we gave a particular, I, I wanted the particular recommendation from our guests that was June fourteenth. They were our first renter of this year. There were twelve. There was a grandparent, like Bill and I, and five of their children, no, or five of their adult children, no children, no boats, just a great family. They had two cars in the overflow area that we always park all the time with no pushback. And we had the three in our driveway. And what was interesting about the recommendation, if you go back and look at it, is a couple of things. Number one, when we Airbnb, we can't, their, their family came from all over the country. Also, people come at different times of their stay. So their son might come from Spokane, another person's coming from Virginia, or whatever. We can't control how many cars they have. And so it's like, you can only have three cars? It, it, it makes no sense. Furthermore, the second, the second part of that is that they literally want to rebook, if you look at the thing, they want to rebook, and they're willing to wait for us to open up our schedule to rebook right now. So having a June third renewal date, and that changed a year, just yearly now, and not being able to apply for sixty days before your renewal date is your policy, gives us no time to do any, to do, to plan, to try to tell people yes. It just stops us dead in our tracks to be able to do what we're trying to do. So I really, we're not trying to do anything illegal. We're trying to follow your three-car. We've never not done that. We couldn't fit any more than that, anyway. But we have some overflow area, and we're not, that's, that's what we're asking. We're not asking to do anything, really, except give us our ability to plan for our guests and have our reputation continue at four point nine six with our guests that we've had for the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, can you hear me? This is Alan Miller. Again, just in conclusion, my clients do have property rights in the overflow off-street area, and so we would ask that you grant the permit to, and allow them a capacity of twelve people.
Thank you.
And we've essentially adopted a quasi-judicial procedure into the middle of the business meeting. So from that perspective, do we have anyone who would like to offer public comment in support of the request? Do we have anyone neutral who would like to offer public comment? Do we have anyone in opposition who would like to offer public comment? Please step up to the microphone, ma'am. And please state your name and residency for the record.
My name's Terrell Black. I am a resident of Huckleberry Bay. I am also a board member of the association. I appreciate their struggle. Every lot is a different size. I do view their concern is more with your change of rule to the three-car. But they are attempting to have you rule on something the Homeowners Association really has control over, and that is the common area of Huckleberry Bay Association. And they are an owner, as are all of us up there. They are part of Sandy Shores. Sandy Shores is regulated by the Design Committee. The Design Committee has stated specifically through our VRBO, we have a document online that they are well aware of regulating VRBOs. It was given to us in August of twenty-four. We passed it. It was approved in September of twenty-four, which states no rent, no parking on homeowner association property. Their grievance regarding this, as far as I'm concerned, is with the Homeowners Association, not with the county. They have many avenues. We have apparently reopened our rental VRBO committee. There is a parking committee. But nothing is decided, and nothing is passed. And they should be taking it through that procedure. And then in the end, if all of those fail, then I suppose they can sue the Homeowners Association. But we control the entire... But we control the entire property that is not privately owned. So we ask that you continue this matter. We also were not aware of this being brought to the commissioners until yesterday. I didn't even know. And if nothing else, we need to be able to secure our own legal counsel to deal with this matter.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So is it my understanding that the parking at the, where the boat trailers park and the parking of the tennis courts are for the homeowners themselves and not for guests, according to the HOA or whatever you've got out there?
That has been a struggle, but VRBOs came after the development of this property and they are trying to clarify that language. But the language states it's only to be used for its intended purposes. The trailer parking was for boat trailers. We don't want boat trailers on the road. We don't want boat trailers in driveways. The tennis courts is for everyone in the association and the intended purposes was to park there to play tennis. Or there are walking trails. Yes, people have parked there. But this is something the homeowners association needs to grapple with and come to terms with and create rules that will hopefully satisfy everyone. But technically, that was meant for, to play tennis and occasional parking, but that's for guests. That did not include renters.
Wayne Martin for the record, Bonner County residents. 7125, comment was made about not knowing about the change. Ignorance of the law or in ordinance change is not a valid excuse to be used as a reason to allow or permit approval for this request. The applicant stated that there was a verbal agreement allowing parking and other facility parking areas before the development was built. You know, if it's not written down, it does not happen. It did not exist. I can sit there and say that my aunt got Brian Wilson to agree that upon his death I got a million dollars, but that doesn't mean it's happening. Just because it was allowed in the past does not mean that it should be allowed to continue. The attorney was aware ahead of time on the first that this was not going to be proceeding forward because he didn't have paperwork. He still took the time to give his presentation, have the clients both come up and do presentations. And then again, he does a presentation today and has his client step up, giving them both opportunities to speak twice on this. I felt that by doing it the first time, it was trying to pull on the heartstrings and the sympathy of the, the commissioners for doing that. And I agree with the lady previously. It sounds like this is more of a situation with the board for the property and not so much for the commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hey Bowman, Bonner County. I just wanted to, I wasn't going to speak to this, but after hearing everything that I've heard so far, I have to agree that it sounds to me like this is an internal situation with the HOA up there. I've, I've never belonged to an HOA and I hopefully never will. But it doesn't seem to me like it concerns the county. And then I just wanted, I've said this at several hearings and it's not always received well, but there has been a history in land use decisions by, I'll just say the B O C C, mostly prior to, to the three we have now, where peoples bring their personal situations and their emotions and their family situations into the picture as part of their case. And we can empathize with them up one side and down the other, but your decision has to be based on what the law is, not on what the ramifications of the law might be with respect to their personal financial situation with VRBO or their 4.96 rating or any of this other stuff. None of that can come into play here per the law. It just has to be the law. So I just, you may not need reminding of that, but maybe some of the public do. And I just wanted to throw that out there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, we will turn it over to the appellants for rebuttal.
Thank you. Thank you very much, commissioners. The three people that have spoken against it don't understand property law, and that is that my clients have a property right in both the tennis court parking area and the overflow area for boat trailers. They, they have a property right. We are not asking to, you to make an emotional decision in favor of my clients. We're asking you to apply the law. My clients have property where they can have a fourth or fifth car parked without any issue. They, they have, there's no danger to the community. There is no rule that prohibits my clients from doing that. And so we just ask you to look at the ordinance that you passed and apply the law, apply the property rights law and allow my clients to have a capacity of 12 people in their cabin because they do have a property right for overflow parking that is off-street and not a danger to anyone. So we'd ask you to rule in our favor.
Thank you. Would the, Lisa?
So, right now-
I'm sorry. Could you please step up to the microphone and state your name and residency for the record?
My name is Bill Ferguson, 216 South Sandy Shore Lane, Coolin. So right now, there are no limitations on parking up there. It's all being contested, but for 31 years, it's been the way, it was always used for people to park, extra parking if needed, whether you were a guest, regardless of Airbnb. So it has been established, there's three short driveways that the design committee gave variant of Barbieri back 31 years ago. So right now, there is no problem. We can park as many cars up there as we want. We're not breaking that rule.
Thank you. Does that conclude the appellants rebuttal? I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, could you say that again?
I just said, yes, we, we close our case.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move into board deliberation. And we do, Commissioner, have the decision-making worksheet for this.
Yep.
I'm actually typing down some of my notes at the moment. If you wouldn't mind giving me a minute.
Oh, sure.
So would you like to walk through the worksheet as we've done?
I think that's the best phase.
Okay.
Yep.
So, starting with Idaho Code 67-6539, stating either a county or a city may enact or enforce any ordinance that has the express or practical effect of prohibiting short-term rentals or vacation rentals in the county or city. A county or city may implement such reasonable regulations as it deems necessary to safeguard the public health, safety and general welfare in order to protect the integrity of residential neighborhoods in which short-term rentals or vacation rentals operate. A short-term rental or vacation rental shall be classified as a residential land use for zoning purposes, subject to all zoning requirements applicable thereto.
I think both parties are in compliance with that. So I would agree with that part of this. That'd be a yes for me.
And it's interesting for me with how to try to apply this one in the sense that the county has elected to implement safeguards within its code to address those health, safety and welfare and the protection of the integrity of the residential neighborhood. So-
I think part of that code also includes that we cannot prohibit short-term rentals.
Correct.
We are not prohibiting short-term rentals.
Yeah. And so I guess in my mind, the question is, is the, is the appellant's request to overturn the decision of the planning department to apply the current code and limit it from 12 to nine occupants, is that in keeping with Idaho Code 67-6539? And so, and for me, to the request to reduce the allowed maximum occupancy from the prior 12 to the current code's nine, based on the interpretation of the parking, is, I think for me, that's the question at hand as to whether or not we consider this to have been complied with.
Um, so I don't, I don't see their, I don't see their appeal as being related to this. I see this specifically telling the counties and municipalities that we don't have the right to prohibit short-term. It also says that we have the right to put conditions on it. And that is exactly what we're doing, I think as a county, is we're not prohibiting and we are putting conditions on it. That's how I view that.
Gotcha. So, yep, I got, I hear what you're saying. And I think we've had just a slightly different angle that we're trying to review that from. So would you be okay with, if we move past that one and go through the, the county code and then we can come back to that one at the end since it's the highest level?
Sure.
Applicable law or rule? So next we have Bonner County Revised Code 12-261, the administrative appeals process.
I'm happy to read that for you as well, if you'd like me to.
Would, Commissioner, would you like, would you like us to read that or would you like to just move into the discussion portion?
I don't need to read it. I don't think, it doesn't need to be on the record, does it?
It doesn't, but there are two aspects to it that you'll need to consider in your decision.
So, yeah, we have A and B subsections. And so in, for the A component, I believe that the applicant has applied, has complied with the requirement to have the appeal. I accept the conclusions of the staff report that they met the requirements for the appeal to be accepted and heard. Do you agree or disagree with that?
I agree.
for subsection B, an administrative appeal shall not be granted if it would function as a grant of special privilege or provide an exception to the regulations contained within this title. And if, for me, it's going to all come down to the interpretation of the shared HOA parking. So the shall not, the language that says shall not be granted if it would provide an exception to the regulations contained within this title. I'm, I have to go back to, I guess it was two weeks ago when we first started this hearing, before it was continued. And the, during that time, the appellant gave testimony and indicated that the HOA shared parking is first come, first serve. Whereas Bonner County Code 12-44C6 indicates that it needs to be designated parking spaces. It talks about off-street, which was addressed as well, but it also says designated. And so the issue that I have in applying the code is if it's required for the spaces to be designated, but it's a shared first come, first serve area, then I don't see how it's possible to comply with the designated parking space requirement to meet having more than three parking spaces, as was shown to be the off-street parking on the property per the application. So to me, that's kind of a linchpin issue is whether or not we can show compliance with the code to meet the designated off-street parking. And in my opinion, we have not received information that shows that there is designated off-street parking that can be committed that would exceed the nine-person occupancy. And so for me, to grant the appeal would be to provide an exception to the regulations contained within this title.
I would agree with you on that. I guess the part that I have a differing opinion is that I would still agree, for me, that A and B both are yes for me, simply understanding the fact that B says that an administrative appeal shall be granted, if it would function, an administrative appeal shall not be granted if it would be a function of granting special privilege. I think to me, that is just, it's code telling us what we can and can't do as a board, acknowledging the fact that we can't grant it if it gives someone a certain property owner a special privilege over others. So to me, it's just simply stating statement, not, not for us to dive in and say whether or not it complies with what the situation is. I'm, that's how I'm making it, is instructions for us.
Gotcha. Okay. So we're just being on that one a little bit differently. Okay.
So I'm saying that I agree on B, that an administrative appeal shall not be granted if it would function as a grant of special privilege. I'm not disagreeing with that.
Gotcha. Yep. And I get, you're just, you're, the way you're applying it's a little bit different than my thinking. So, okay. So then, Bonner County Revised Code 12-44, vacation rental permits.
So are we, are we both going to say yes on?
I'm, it's a no for me because of B, because I have a slightly different perspective on how to interpret the, the application of that. So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. So I think you and I just have slightly different perspectives on how to apply subsection B. And then Bonner County Revised Code 12-44A, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Yes. A vacation rental permits. So this one summarizes the intent to protect the health, safety and welfare in the character of the residential areas. And so for me, I'd say no, because the county updated its code in 2024 to reduce the allowed maximum occupancy of vacation rentals to better safeguard the public health, safety and welfare and to protect the rural and residential areas, ensuring compatibility with surrounding residential uses that will not materially alter the neighborhoods in which they are located. So approving an occupancy higher than the current code allows can create a strain on the ability to provide emergency services and creates temporary housing conditions that can be at odds with the adjacent residential uses, which places this appeal in conflict with the purpose to safeguard the public health, safety and general welfare and to protect their character residential areas, ensuring compatibility with surrounding residential uses that will not materially alter the neighborhoods in which they are located. So I don't, I don't see conformance with those requirements for this code section.
Okay. So I, again, I looked at that a little differently, to be honest with you.
Sure.
But I, I understand your point to that. I'm- I'm I guess I'm reading things a little differently than you. To me, most of this, up to this point so far, is more of an instruction manual. And so, yes, I agree with the intent. But I, I see your point that by allowing more vehicles to be parked on other parts of this community that may alter the neighborhood, so, may alter the intent. So I do see your point to that. So what you're saying, what, the way you're looking at it is, does it comply with?
Yeah, it doesn't comply with the intent of A, correct? That's how I'm looking at it. And that's why I reached the conclusion that I did.
Okay. And I would agree with you that it, in my opinion, it does not comply with the intent of 12-484. So it's just a matter of how we're reading it.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Yeah, I think so.
So I am okay with putting no on that one.
Okay, 12-484A.
Yes.
Confirmed. And for 12-484B, it talks about the application procedures and requirements. My answer is yes, I accept the findings of the staff report indicating that the renewal application was deemed complete.
Yes.
And then ECRC 12-44C, having to do with the standards for the permit.
On that one, I don't feel that they're complying to the new ordinance 707. And I will refer back to C, Section C 1D, where it states all current standards of this section as existing and amended on the submission date of the application for renewal shall be met in order to obtain the vacation rental permit renewal. That's what's in question. They have not met the current standards, and that's why we're in appeal, is because they want us to appeal those current standards. So I think that it is not, we're not in compliance on C1D as C3 and C6.
I concur.
Also.
Those are the same subsections that I noted.
Okay. All having to do with the occupancy and three people per car. 707.
Yep, I agree. So we have the two persons per bedroom.
Which would be 10 people in this situation.
Or, yep, three per vehicle, up to three per vehicle, whichever is lesser.
Whichever is lesser is what our code is.
Which is why they came up with the nine through, through the staff decision. And you mentioned, and I agree, C6 parking. And that's where it says, no more vehicles shall be parked on the property than there are designated off-street parking spaces. And for me, the designated is the key term because that's where we get into the, the conversation, which I think is the primary discussion point of the appellant's of the HOA parking. But the HOA is first come, first served, not designated. We don't have any ability as a county to be guaranteed that those are going to be available off-street parking spaces at any given time to meet the need of the occupancy. And so I think that is clearly the intent of the code, based on the language that's in subsection six. And so that's why I find that it, it is in compliance with the other subsections. But as you said, C1, D3, and six, I see that it's
C3.
I'm sorry, C?
C1, D, C3, and C6.
You're correct, C1, D, C3A.
C3A.
And C6, thank you. I agree. Thank you for the correction. So yeah, I just, I go back to needing to have designated parking spaces in order to complete the calculation, to come up with the occupancy. I believe for the application and the testimony given, we only have three designated off-street parking spaces. And therefore, I think the nine person occupancy per code is the correct number.
I think this really hinges around that wording there, because they have to be able to provide parking, bottom line, and that's the whole intent of this. And you, you can't, if you don't have designated parking spots elsewhere that are specifically for your lot or your parcel, you can't guarantee those renters, those parking spaces. Gets back to what you were hanging up on as far as the designated part, so.
I agree with you. Shall we move on to the next section?
D?
Yes. 12-44D. I do believe that this, I would accept that, but the staff report indicates that the local representative meets the applicable standards of this code section.
I agree.
And 44E, violations. I would accept this to say that the findings of the staff report indicate this code provision is non-applicable to this application, as there is no past or present violation in regards to this vacation rental permit. I saw it, yeah, on record, so. And there was actually public comment recently received alleging violations associated with this rental permit, but no such violations have been verified. So without that verification, I think this is a yes that's in compliance.
So the only ones that we're not in agreement with was the person, second one?
I believe that's correct. And if, I think it's okay for us to disagree on how to interpret those two. If ultimately we agree that we have to find conformance with 12-44C, the permit requirements.
Yes.
Standards. We've agreed, as I understand it, to, that it's not in compliance with subsection C1, D3, and A6.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't say that correctly. Subsection. I did it wrong again. Subsection C1D. 3A.
C3.
C3A, thank you. And C6.
C3. Selling you papers, the way to go.
Well, I can't argue with you today. I'm still going to try to win that argument eventually. So, C 1D. C3A. And C6?
Yes.
C3A. And C6. So it's my opinion that since we're in agreement on, in particular, this section of code, that because of that decision, regardless of how we interpret some of the other earlier sections, that ultimately, I believe what we're saying is we're concluding that we should uphold the staff's decision.
Yes, specifically because of 707. And it does not comply to that. Even if we agreed that everything else did comply, that I think is, that's not in compliance. Do you have any other arguments raised during the hearing? This little section here for our notes.
Yeah, good question.
Because I wrote down some things, some, some thoughts. The off-site parking such as shared parking is not in our code. Only designated parking spots, off-site, which means on the property. So I don't even see how we could agree to the appeal if that's not in the code. Not saying that if we don't like it, or the general consensus is the code needs to be changed, great. But as it stands right now, it's not in there. I did use the GIS mapping to map the tennis courts and the trailer parking from the parcel, and it's more like 300 yards. Is that a factor? Maybe a lot of people aren't going to want to park 300 yards away. So if there's not enough parking off-site, does that breed the possibility of someone parking their car in the street in front of the house instead of 300 yards away? I think that is the intent of the code, is that they have to show the off-site parking so that they're not hindering the neighbors and the streets by having vehicles parked in those streets.
So yeah, if the off-street is not right at the property
Right, an empty lot next door, something that they have owner approval to use that parking lot. I think that may be a different situation possibly, I don't know. But being 300 yards away, that's, that's a, that's quite the job.
I see your point, and I think that does fall within the, like you said, the intent. The, to your point, you know, items raised were, really what I primarily heard being raised was that it's a property right issue, but I don't, we're not contesting the right that the landowners have within their HOA agreement for their personal use of a common parking area. We're just saying the code requires it to be a designated off-street parking space. And we have testimony that that's not the way, that that common parking functions. So I think if, if the, if they had documentation from the HOA saying they had designated parking for that purpose, then I think we could show compliance with the code, but short of having designated parking in a common HOA parking area, I don't see how we can show conformance.
I agree with you. And there are other things that are brought up to you, I think even by the appellant themselves, saying that this is a first come, first served basis. So if I'm an owner out there and I'm having all the high school tennis team come up on Saturday to play tennis, that parking lot's full, and now the renters don't have a place to park. So it's just not a guaranteed parking spot. And the fact that you brought up, and it, and it was suggested today that these were made available to the owners, not to the renters. I couldn't imagine if you had three or four different vacation rentals in the same spot, all wanting to use that same parking spot for the same designated time. I don't think that's our place to be able to say, yes, you can, or no, you can't. And I would like to, to let the appellant's know too, that if at any time, like this situation, that you guys don't like the way the code is written, this new 707, petition and, and see if we can get the code changed to four people per vehicle, which would get you back to your 12 people in your vacation rental. I don't know why it's three, but it is three, and it's spelled out that it's three. I don't know why it couldn't be four, but for the situation that we're here today for, it states three. I'm always one to say that if you don't like it, petition to change it.
Yeah, people can make any requests and it can be heard and considered. Were there other items that were brought up during the appeal that you'd like to review together?
No, I don't think so. I think we're really addressing one issue.
I agree. Would you like to make a motion?
So Commissioners, in order to make sure that your decision is as defensible as possible, we need to make sure that there's a finding for the first two standards, because they were reviewed.
So you had a split finding?
Yeah.
Which is acceptable to my understanding.
I'm, I'm not sure.
It is the, it is the, what the record, the record should show that there was a split finding between the board, is my understanding. We've done that on a prior file.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep. Before?
A split, a split vote results in no decision, but we can have, within the deliberations, we can have dissenting opinions. As long as we come to an agreed decision and within the vote on the motion.
Okay.
Is my understanding. Appreciate you on that.
These are still very new to all of us, so yeah, I appreciate it.
Can I ask for like a five-minute recess?
Yes, it is 10:20.
Before you stop speaking, can you ask the Department of Edisons and Elections to have a question about this?
It is 10:23, and we will recess until 10:30. If everyone didn't hear, Department of Edisons. We're gonna, we're gonna continue the meeting, so if we can. I just want to give everybody a moment to reset. It's 10:34, and this meeting is reconvening. So we are in board deliberation, and I think we've reached the end of deliberation, if you agree.
We both agree, yep, and I do think that it's okay for us to disagree on a couple of things. And I, and I hope that the people in the public will appreciate we're not just rubber stamping and all that good stuff, and we're doing it civilly. So we get back in the other room. So yes, I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay, please proceed.
I move to affirm the Planning Director's decision of approval as rendered for this project filed VRP 2021-0030 to allow a maximum occupancy of nine people. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff memo was prepared and testimony received at this meeting. I further move to adopt the reasoned statement as required by Item Code 67-6535 and adopt the analysis in the staff memo unless otherwise stated. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Step down in a second. Any further deliberation?
I have none.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. And now we have Planning Department, item number three, since we removed item number two from the agenda for today.
Was number three for Ponderay or Clark Fork?
Number three was for Ponderay.
Okay, so in front of you is an ordinance to establish a new area of impact for the city of Ponderay. The Commissioners at the June 16th public hearing approved the reference application. There are changes needed to the proposed area of impact map, which has been updated to accurately reflect the city limits and approved area of impact. This was reviewed by Legal on May 14.
It looks like they've amended their map compared to the first one that they brought in. There was a discrepancy between Cootenay and Ponderay, and it looks like they've adjusted those boundaries.
That's correct.
That's how I view it as well. Any additional questions?
I see no problem or issues with what they have submitted.
Would you like to make a motion?
Based on the information before us, I move that I.
I read that as well.
Who typed that? Based on the information before us, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned, citing its authority and providing for the adoption, the area of impact for the city of Ponderay as amended at the June 16th, 2025 hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Step down in a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, or deliberation?
I have none.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, and item number four, it's the same type of ordinance for the city of Clark Fork. They amended their map after the June 16th public hearing as well.
I see no issues with the amended map.
I know that we had had an error on the map, the first hearing. There was a small area, two odd-shaped parcels in the lower right corner there that had been showing as the area of impact, and that was incorrect, so that had to be revised, which was why we couldn't adopt it at that time, as I recall. Any additional questions?
In fact, I think it was in that.
Yes.
Right there, huh? So I have no further questions.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would. Based on the information before us, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, Idaho, the number to be assigned, citing its authority and providing for the adoption, the area of, area of impact for the city of Clark Fork as amended at the June 16th, 2025 hearing, and providing for an effective date.
Step down in a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, or deliberation?
I have none.
Or do I? Roll call vote, please. Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Alex. Next up is the District One Commissioner update. The simple highlights are that the past week have been primarily focused on completing our Board of Equalization hearings, which is a very interesting process for anyone who's not participated or observed. So my thanks to the assessor and all of the assessor's staff in going through that process. The Board of Equalization asked a lot of questions, which I think is appropriate because we want to make sure that we're doing a good job of representing the appellateants and understanding their issues before we make decisions, but that was a very informative process and a very long and engaged process. And so it was great to be able to hear all of those and complete that from my perspective. And it was my first time doing that, so I learned a lot. And then since completing those, it's been now refocusing on budgets and having conversations with different departments about trying to finalize what their budget approach will be so that they can come forward when we have our budget hearings here over the next few weeks, and we can make final decisions on that. So again, appreciate everyone's involvement with entertaining our new process of being a little bit more thorough and requesting more details about different budget requests and how those dollars are intended to be spent. So that's going to be the remainder of time, I think, over the next few weeks where there's focus on that. And then I'll be shifting back to land use issues as we have additional land use hearings that are going to be coming up regarding the comprehensive plan. So that's, those are my areas of focus have been and will be over the next few weeks. And since Commissioner Williams is continuing to deal with a new urgent issue that's come up, we don't have her here for the District Two report, so we'll move on to the District Three report.
I would just like to echo your report, and I would like to thank the Assessor's Office for having the patience to put up with the new board and deal with our questions, but I feel the same as you. I feel a lot more educated on the subject, as much as we'd like to help people. Most of the time, we, I think it's an educational process, really, because, I mean, look what we learned. Once we understand how everything works, the process works, I think that's one reason that we had very little viewies this year compared to the past is because I think the Assessor's Office actually did a great job with the people that came in before addressing their issues, and I think that most of the issues were addressed, and we got what was left, and so now we're educated, so thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, I apologize, I keep forgetting to do this. I did not ask if anybody had any questions about what I reported, which was not a lot, but if anybody does have a question specific to what I reported, please feel free to come up and ask the question. Seeing none, we'll just move into public comment. Yes, sir. Please state your name and residency for the record.
Hello, my name is Jacob Alexander, I live here in Bonner County. I would like to talk about Fair. I love Fair. Fair is something that brings the community together, and appreciate how you guys do all this stuff. And the new wash racks, very excited for those in the pig barn. Those were definitely in need. It was, it was rough out there at 8:00 AM trying to wrangle pigs. It's terrible. So thank you for that. Appreciate all you guys do for the community, especially for Fair, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like you're making some good memories, though.
They're interesting.
No, you don't. Thank you for your comment.
Fred Arndt, still a Bonner County resident. I want to compliment the two of you in the way you handled that, the situation. I, I know that, I received a note from the Republican Central Committee talking about censure and all. I, I think that was probably the most open process that I've seen. I don't know where the discussion about being secretive and not doing things in the open comes from, because that was pretty open and pretty straight up. I might also remind you that as a Camp Bay person, there is nothing in Idaho statute or law that prevents you, as a board, from going back and making sure that things were done legally and properly. And it would be really interesting to have, have that done in an open meeting where everybody could hear the discussion. And I, I might point out that a lot of the facts that were presented at that hearing, the initial hearing, were just grossly inaccurate, and I would really like to have seen an open discussion about those facts. And if you're not doing anything in the future, you might want to consider doing that. Thanks.
Thank you.
How's the future for you look?
I think we're making improvements as a board on, on how business is being done, and I hope it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Wayne Martin, for the record, Bonner County resident. I would say that yes, you are, because instead of this room being packed with people out the hallway, you're seeing the people that are showing up. Yesterday's meeting with the Fair Board, it was hard to hear the chairperson. There were people that were not mentioning names and/or, you know, where they were from. It was interesting that the Fair Board did not seem to be willing or wishing to answer many of your questions that were being put to them. And there is still no five-year plan, which had been requested by you guys from them. I am happy to see some of the things that they are looking at. With the prosecutor, I like the idea of the 10, 10,000 rehire or, or not rehire, but hiring and/or the reallocation. It was very difficult at times to listen or hear Bill Wilson, the prosecutor, on those. The interesting on the grading of employees. It would be nice to find some way. Uh, it would be nice to find some way of, you know, being able to better or come up with an easier solution on that. Uh, and it is surprising to me, for those that are not aware of it, that offering 130,000 and you still cannot get employees to come, uh, and apply, or somebody to come and apply. I've commented before about getting people, uh, from the different departments to respond to, um, what the Planning Department is putting out there. That is the list of all the people that they send out, and it's no wonder that departments do not respond. Uh, one of the applications that it was sent out to, uh, was sent to Spirit Lake Fire, yeah, which had no interest in it, and if they're getting that many things sent to them, you can't expect that departments that are technically understaffed receive and then reply back to them. I would think that there is some way to be able to better consolidate the emails that go out or the mailing that go out to the areas that it pertains to. You would not, whether you are a candidate or whether you are a church trying to get people to come to you or a business, you're not gonna send it out to every single person that's around. You're going to narrow the focus on where you need or wish or desire the responses to come from. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
Good morning, Dave Bowman, Bonner County. First off, I'll speak to Wayne's comment, uh, about sending notices to, to so many different agencies within the county, because I complained about the same thing, and I was told, and I verify it's correct. Unfortunately, this is, this comes from LUPA, uh, the state statute that requires, and the language says that, that when there's a land use issue coming before the decision-making body, that they have to send out notices to all public agencies within the Planning Department's jurisdiction. And it, it doesn't make sense, but that's the way that it's worded. So unfortunately, you know, there's, for something that's gonna happen down in the Hoodoo Valley, they're including the Ellisport Bay Sewer District in hope. Uh, and it, it, it's unfortunate, it's unintended consequence of, of poorly worded language. It, it would be nice if the Planning Department could follow up differently, you know, and send that massive, because I think a lot of them don't get responded to and they go straight to the circular file, uh, because they get so many that do not concern them. I do think the Planning Department could make a little bit extra effort and send, you know, just an email notice or something to the ones that actually are affected with decisions that are coming forward, so that they, you know, that, it would take a little bit of extra effort, but I think the return would be very beneficial for, for everyone, because a lot of them do end up just getting discarded. Uh, the main thing I wanted to speak about this morning, and I'll compliment the two of you for working through, uh, uh, Brian and Ron, working through these reasoned statements, they are a huge improvement, they should have been done years ago. It's unfortunate that it had to come to case law to push, th- this has always been in the statute that this was required, but it hasn't been done by Bonner County. I want to commend you for, because I saw the last couple that happened, and I won't mention the cases, but where you disagreed on a particular thing, and, and it was about whether applications have been complete. And one of you ended up convincing the other to go along with, rather than just staying with disagree, because it's all part of the record, and it should be in the record. If you disagree on one particular point, then that's how it is. And the, what is important is that you come to a consensus, which is why you have a vote. And it's, in this case, it could have been a tie vote or whatever. The fact that you disagree on certain points should be left in the record, and, and don't change your opinion to go along with the other person. So what you did today, in my opinion, was the way it should be done every time. If you disagree, you disagree, that's part of the record. So the last thing I'd like to speak to is, uh, Fred Arndt mentioned that he got a letter from the Bonner County Republican Central Committee, as did I, actually from Scott Hearn in the chair. And I thought that this had been put to rest already, but here we go again with Mr. Hearn, and in a, what appeared to be a desperate attempt to, I, I would say, remain relevant, but he isn't relevant anymore, so he's trying to regain...
Mr. Bowman?
Yes?
Could you please keep your comments directed to the board?
Well, I am directing to the board.
I ju- I put, can we speak on, on, yeah, can we keep it focused on, on county issues? I, I just, instead of speaking about other people.
Well, this, isn't this portion for public comment, period?
It is, I'm just requesting...
Is there a restriction on what public comment can address?
I'm making, I'm making a request that we try to stay focused on comments to the board regarding county business. I just think it's better, just a request.
Okay.
You're right, I can't, I will not, I will not limit your free speech, I'm just making a request.
Well, this is county business, and, and I thank you for upholding my right to free speech. And this is county business, because the attack is coming to two county commissioners, and you are one of them, Commissioner Williams is the other, so that's the county business part. And for doing your job, that the Central Committee and whoever it is that pulls their strings are wanting to censor you and begin the attack now on your performance. And in my opinion, and I think most people in that room are gonna say the two of you are the best two commissioners who've come down the pike in the time that I've been, and that you are there to serve your community rather than have the community serve you. And if anyone was going to be censured for this county business that occurred on May 21st, it should in fact be the person who guided you to do what turned out later to be a mistake, which you rectified as county business, and that would be Bill Wilson, serving under Prosecutor Lewis Marshall. I don't think anyone needs to be censored, but if anyone is, it really should be those two. It should not be Brian Domke or Asia Williams, who have served performing county business, uh, admirably. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Ann Wilder, Bonner County resident. I just was, uh, and when you gave your report, it was, I want to, had a question on what you didn't report on, which was an update on the telecom ordinance, um, uh, update, I guess.
So, there is no, there's no change in status at this time. Um, so I didn't report anything on that, because we're still in the process of the prosecutor's office working on, um, looking for, uh, specialty attorneys to see if, um, if there's one in particular that we can work with to assist the board in that process. Um, so the update is we're, we're still in the same position, and we're still trying to, um, receive qualifications from and consider, uh, an attorney that specializes in the, uh, the federal aspect of the Telecommunications Act that was passed in 1996.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alisa, is there another hand up? I can't... Are all the names not showing up on the screen? Okay. Ms. Welly?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Diane Welly, Bonner County resident. I just want to thank Dave Bowman for his comments. I saw the picture on the BCRCC page that made Commissioner Domke and Commissioner Williams look like a couple of, uh, mugshots, and I'm embarrassed for the county, and you are, you and Asia are the two hardest working commissioners I have ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heisner?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Teresa Heisner, Priest River, for the record. I just want to echo, uh, Diane Welly and Dave Bowman's comments. The, uh, message sent out by the Bonner County Republican Central Committee that endorsed you candidates is egregious, it's gross, you, they make you look like criminals, and it's unacceptable. I personally think you guys are doing a great job, and even you, Ron, seeing you and Brian work cohesively today to, to figure it out was refreshing. So, just want to put my two cents in, I hope everyone has a great week, thank you. Oh, and there is a meeting tonight, the Central Committee, if you all, they did open public comment back up last month, so let's see if they uphold that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Catherine Farreg, for the record, Bonner County resident. So apparently, uh, the three unconsolidated fire districts are gonna make an end run and try to, uh, get consolidated under H, the rules of HB 208. But I would like to go on the record and read part of that. And what they say is, unless within the 30 days a petition signed by 25% of the qualified electors of one of the fire protection districts objecting to the consolidation, be filed with the Secretary of the District, they can stop this consolidation from happening. So I want everybody to know that you can stop this if you don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Uh, Bernie Fichette, Old Town, long-term resident. I, uh, want to compliment your staff who works at all of our dumps. I've lived here for 23 years, and they're absolutely fantastic people. Every single person I've come in and met with them at the dumps are fantastic people. And I wanted to raise concerns at the Idaho Hill Dump. The other day I was there, and I want to make sure that it's me speaking, not your employee. I met this fantastic lady that told me where to bring my cement down to get rid of it, and I noticed she was wearing a towel over her neck and shoulders, and I asked her, I says, you know, it was a 100-degree day, I'm sweating just throwing six bags of trash into the dump. And I says, "How is your air conditioning?" She says, "Not that good, it's about 100 years old." And it bothered me so much thinking about this woman and the other staff that are in a shed, basically a 12-by-12 shed, getting baked in the sun every single day, and their porta-potty getting baked in the sun, and these are the working conditions that your fantastic employees have to endure every day. It bothered me so much, I went down to the Ace Hardware in Old Town, and I already knew the answer, and I, and I went and looked, and a 5,000 BTU air conditioner's $189. I think you should get a 6,000 BTU air conditioner for them, because, you know, I'm not trying to put their department head on, on the defense or put you on the defense, I'm just here to, to take care of your employees and ask you to talk to the department head and say, "Go buy them an air conditioner," because if you spend $215 and a 6,000 BTU air conditioner for your staff, that's, that's what you should do, because I can't imagine, if she's wearing a towel over her shoulders to, to go to work, "Here we are in air conditioning, something's wrong with their, um, working conditions." I've been here, with my drive time, it's almost gonna be close to four hours just to speak for your employees, and that's me, I, I can imagine that they may be defensive, that they're gonna get in trouble. This is me bringing this up to you, not them, she said nothing negative about anything. I just, I was blown away at what she looked like, she looked like she was just, got done doing a 26-mile marathon, and I felt so bad for her, so I wanted to come and raise this concern and ask you to buy them an air conditioner.
I appreciate your comment, and I appreciate you taking the time to come down and inform us of that. Thank you.
Yeah, please, 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 get it, get it done, please, they're, they're important people, because otherwise we have nowhere to get rid of our trash.
Yeah, thank you for making us...
Or we might end up with grumpy ones down there.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Contact, Bob. Any additional public comment? One moment. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Okay.
I just wanted to say...
I'm sorry, I need you to go to the mic, I'm sorry, but...
I just want to say that I agree with what everybody else said, that you guys did a fantastic job with that issue, and it was very interesting for me to see how that works, that you have a worksheet and you work through the law, and everything is on the up and up. Catherine Farreg, Bonner County, for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is long enough, but we're on the up and up now.
Any additional public comment? Does mean that everyone has to listen to us talk longer. Okay, it is 11:03, and this meeting is adjourned.